Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the June Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 26, 2020, and January 2, 2021. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the deform of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cellphone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Can we please rise for the flag of allegiance? Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Catamatori?
Here.
Ms. Deliera?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Ms. DeCarion?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a forum.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, for the recognition portion of our meeting.
Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students, joining us tonight via Google Meet as we remain dedicated to our social distancing measures. I am honored to stand before you today and introduce our talented and dedicated principals as they come up to the podium and celebrate our students, our Students of the Month for both May and June. All of our students, both onsite and remote, deserve to be recognized for remaining focused and dedicated to their selected learning models during these most unique times. While we are proud of all of our students, those which we will celebrate tonight have truly excelled and proven that no matter what, anything, and everything is possible, especially in our small part of the world called Hoboken. So please give us your attention at this time as we celebrate them for doing their best to show us their very best. As a reminder, when principals come to the podium, they will hover over their student of the month and pin him or her to the screen. This will ensure that only their student is on the screen. The moment will be more personal and ensure a better picture opportunity. Once they are done with their honoring, they will simply unpin and all students will, like magic, reappear on the screen. Tonight, we will do things a bit differently. This evening, we will begin our celebration with Hoboken High School, and we will have Principal Pica Pietra up first. She will pin and celebrate her selection at the podium, and then we'll welcome Superintendent Dr. Johnson to join us for a special student recognition. Once Dr. Johnson concludes her recognition, we will ask that Hoboken Middle School Principal, Ms. Mara, take the podium for hers. She will then be followed by Principal Shannon, Vice Principal Sorfin, and Principal Bartlett of Wallace, Connors, and Brant respectively. Thank you for your attention tonight, and with that, I turn the podium over to Principal Pica Pietra.
This is the problem being first, you never have to do this. That's up there she is. Good evening. Hi, Zenaya. Hi, Mom. I'd like to congratulate Zenaya Johnson, our May Student of the Month, and she is the senior graduating in 13 days. I have had the pleasure of knowing Zenaya for six years, and I am thrilled, as she leaves our school, that I get to honor her as Student of the Month. It is great, what is great about having students for six years is the ability to see their growth. You get to welcome them in your school at 12-years-old and then send them off at 18-years-old to college. The transitions that I have witnessed are amazing, much like the young lady we are honoring tonight. Zenaya has been consistent. She has always been a hard worker and always concerned about her grades. She puts in the effort, no matter what the content, and pushes herself to ensure she is doing her very best. Mr. D. Benedetto shared that in contemporary social issues, she is genuinely interested in current issues and has a keen ability to express herself in a clear, no-nonsense manner. Her energy and contributions to class provide great insights and provoke great conversation. Mr. Anderson, her pre-calculus teacher, added she has a drive to succeed and will do very well with whatever she chooses to do in the future. She is caring and hard-working, which contributes to her success. Ms. Chekov added that she is polite, organized, and dependable. She completes all of her work on time and asks questions when she needs to. What is most remarkable about Zenaya is her ability to connect to the literature. Her insight is extremely valuable to class discussions. She is also very helpful to her classmates and voluntarily assists struggling students. In her sophomore year, Zenaya made the decision to choose more challenging classes in multiple content areas. While she struggled to start, she stuck with it and persevered. She set her mind towards her studies and never looked back. Zenaya continues to maintain academic rigor in her studies, recognizing that she is preparing herself for college-level independence. Outside of the classroom, Zenaya has tried different activities. She has been a cheerleader for the past three years and ran track for the team. In addition, Zenaya is involved in Hispanic Culture Club and is most proud of her induction into the Hispanic National Honor Society. Zenaya has acceptances to Caldwell University, Fairleigh Dickinson University, Newman University, NJCU, and William Patterson University, as well as Hudson County Community College. She has decided to spend the first two years at Hudson County Community College and then pursue her degree in psychology at a four-year university. We are confident Zenaya, you will continue the great work you started here many years ago. For me, I will miss coming out of my office in a hurry at A-15 or A-20 and seeing you at your locker, wishing you a good morning. I know you will do, go on to do great things, always remember to come back, take what you have learned, apply it, and always make it count. Congratulations, Zenaya.
You're welcome.
Sam? Are you there? Well, I'm gonna read, and if, I hope you can hear me, but I'll, you're there, so you're just in that virtual world. Our June Student of the Month is Sam May, also a senior at Hoboken High School. I met Sam May when she transferred to us from Xavier High School last fall. Since that time, I have come to know Sam as a spirited and highly intelligent student. She truly makes an impression, whether it is from her fierce determination, her musical passion, or her philosophical debates. Sam, through her classwork, has demonstrated strong problem-solving skills and grasps new concepts easily. Mr. Teraskowitz said she evaluates the conversation in, I apologize, she elevates the conversation in AP US History class, often seeking to examine and understand differing perspectives and viewpoints in American history. Academically, Sam is a superior student. She is intellectually curious and able to truly synthesize what she learns. She is able to challenge ideas and intelligently debate based on what she is learning. Rather than simply absorbing information, Sam is able to work with it, make judgments, and draw new conclusions. Sam has continued to challenge herself and to be successful in rigorous courses. Outside of the classroom, Sam spends a great deal of time practicing her craft. She has been playing the guitar for a number of years now, is self-taught, and plays in bands as well. She is truly passionate about music and is a real student of the art, learning all genres and becoming well-versed in different generations of music and different perspectives. Mr. Stasiak shared Sam is one of the most talented songwriters that he has encountered in his career. She crafts catchy melodies and uses the most advanced production techniques that are available. Sam works on music at home and always goes above and beyond in the classroom, often serving as a mentor to other students, whether it is helping them get online or making their project sound the best they can. In addition to her music, Sam has spent a lot of time volunteering at the Jubilee Center in Hoboken, as well as the homeless shelter. She has worked as a volunteer tutor and kitchen assistant. Sam's chosen extracurricular pursuits show a conscientious nature as well as a desire to spend time on activities that are enjoyable and/or demonstrate real purpose. Overall, I find Sam to be an intelligent and passionate student with a vast amount of potential. She will only grow as she is exposed to more and more kinds of environments and people as well as more advanced learning. Sam's post-secondary plans include college deferment as she plans to enter the workforce after graduation. I look forward to hearing of her future pursuits in years to come. Congratulations, Sam May.
Hi, Jason. Hello. Let's make sure he knows we're here. Jason? All right, there we go. Can you hear me? Okay, all right. When I first arrived in the district six years ago, I heard the name Jason Blanks. At that time, he was a middle-school student. He always had a great personality, tried his best in all of his classes, and showed great athletic promise. It's hard to believe that six years have passed. Still sporting a warm and welcoming personality, Jason is set to graduate on June 25. As a former student athlete myself, I am so proud of Jason for all of his accomplishments and the young man that he has become. With a strong mindset of a group of parents that know how to advocate pretty powerfully and positively, steeped in Red Wing tradition, and not shy to speak out when there's something that they feel strongly about, Jason seems to walk in the same path as his parents. As you know, I don't typically give out a Student of the Month award. That is something that's special between teachers and principals in each of our schools. But when I was in the high school about a month ago, receiving a sweatshirt from the class of 2021, Jason said to Mr. Munoz, "What does a guy have to do around here to become Student of the Month?" I said to him, "You have achieved so much at Hoboken High School," and he said, "Yeah, everything except being Student of the Month, and I really want it before I graduate." Talk about the confidence to self-advocate. I thought about it, and this is the beginning of a new tradition. There will be a superintendent Student of the Month at the end of each school year, a student that epitomizes self-confidence and notable achievements. According to staff members and students at Hoboken High School, Jason is always willing to help other students in and out of the classroom when needed. He is a hard worker and he is conscientious. Jason has leadership qualities. He's one of the first ones to answer questions in class and keeps conversations alive, according to Mr. Munoz. Jason has been a member of the Hoboken High School varsity football, basketball, baseball, and track and field teams. Jason's commitment to his academics have been notable as he has been on the honor roll since freshman year and has been a member of the Athletic Directors Academic Achievement List. Jason has also been awarded Hudson County Interscholastic Athletic League's Jersey Journal Basketball Player of the Week, and most recently, the 2001 NJSIAA Scholar-Athlete Award. Jason is a member of the African-American Culture Club, the Hispanic Culture Club, and Heroes and Cool Kids. Jason's post-secondary plans include attending Rowan University, where he will continue his football career and major in sports communications and business. I have no doubt in my mind that Jason will have a great career at Rowan University, both in the classroom and on the football field. I look forward to following your stats, but most importantly, closing the deal with a college diploma. Congratulations on being named Superintendent Student of the Month.
Thank you, Jason. At this time, I'd like to have Ms. Mara, Principal of Hoboken Middle School, come on up to the microphone.
Congratulations, Jason. Hi, Haley. Dedicated, extraordinary, driven, and kind. These are just a few of the adjectives used to describe our overall May Student of the Month, Ms. Haley Dobson, a proud member of the Hoboken Middle School class of 2021. Haley was nominated by several of her teachers. Ms. Jettie shared Haley is an outstanding student in French. She joined in-person instruction in the middle of October and felt some trepidation about making the transition to the classroom. She tackled the transition head-on and worked very hard to become confident with the material. Just four days after joining class, Haley earned an A on her first test. As the year progressed, Haley set very high expectations for herself, consistently going above and beyond on all assignments. Recently, she worked very hard on a translation activity, demonstrating a desire for knowledge that I find truly noteworthy. Ms. Gomez shared Haley Dobson is an exceptional young lady. As a student, she exemplifies insightfulness, scholastic aptitude, and academic success. Haley's ability to analyze and think critically about what she reads is comparable to students far beyond her grade level, and her writing skills are that of a published author. As a classmate, Haley demonstrates empathy, kindness, and concern for her peers. As a person, Haley is kind, thoughtful, and determined. She has a positive attitude and a warm personality. Her perseverance is commendable. Haley was inducted into the inaugural group of the Hoboken Middle School National Junior Honor Society and exemplifies the pillars of the National Junior Honor Society, and we couldn't be prouder of her commitment to our school community. Haley's favorite subject is social studies. She loves the way Ms. Anderson teaches and getting to learn, not only the history of different countries, but also the culture, is intriguing. Haley's favorite book is Little Women because it details the lives of four young women, each with their own personalities and stories. Haley feels it's very relatable, even though it was written in the 1800s. Haley is also involved, I'm sorry, I have something in my eye and I can't see. Do you have like a tissue anywhere? Sorry, Haley, I got something in my eye and I can't see what I'm reading. That's okay. Sorry. Thank you, sorry about that. You might be surprised to know that Haley is a world traveler. Of the places she's been, three stand out the most. Belize for its lifestyle and colorful plants, she found both very enticing. Iceland for its culture and adaptability, and New Zealand for its clean ecosystem and unique sights. Haley enjoys spending time with her family, Mom, Dad, and younger sister Charlotte. Whether it is watching shows together, playing board games, or just simply having a conversation, Haley is always appreciative of her family time, and of course, playing with her shy but sassy hamster Nugget. Haley has many interests in addition to softball, such as writing, drawing, and kicking back with a puzzle, but her true passion is music. She said, and I quote, "I love to listen to music. If I had to choose between no music and no TV for the rest of my life, I would 100% choose no TV." Whether spending time at the beach in the summer or snowboarding in the winter, one thing is for certain. Haley is a bright, articulate, kind young woman who will go far in life. Haley was surprised, yet very complimented, upon hearing the news that she is the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, so please join me in congratulating Haley Dobson as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for May 2021.
Congratulations, Haley. Gage Angley, a proud member of the Hoboken Middle School class of 2023, is truly deserving of the honor of Student of the Month. Gage is dedicated to his schoolwork and is making the most out of being a remote learner this year. Upon hearing the news that he is the June Student of the Month, Gage said he was surprised and very happy. Nominated by several of his teachers, Ms. Ratliff had this to say about Gage. "Gage has been a remote student all year and has always been such a kind and caring student. He works hard every day and always asks questions when he needs clarification or just to make sure he is on the right track. He volunteers to share his thoughts and ideas whenever I ask the class to share, and he is very respectful when others share their thoughts as well. Gage is very deserving of this, and I am so glad that I was able to be his teacher for the entire school year." Ms. Fernandez added, "Gage is one of the hardest-working students I have had the pleasure of knowing. He always does his assigned work and would reach out if he needed clarification on any topic. I especially appreciate his participation in class. He is dependable and a hard-working young man who really worked hard in preparation for steam tank alongside his partner." Ms. Donnelly shared, "Gage is a thoughtful, dedicated student who always participates and is the first to volunteer in class. He is truly a bright spot on the screen and will always, is always willing to help his fellow classmates. Gage is interested in engineering or inventing as a career because he likes to make gadgets and comes up with ideas to help humanity. Although he is not sure where he wants to go to college yet, he has, he has been to Penn State and the University of Pennsylvania where his parents went, and he likes both of those schools. Gage is very proud to be part of the Hoboken Middle School Best Buddies Chapter." And Ms. Baraloff shared, "It has been such a pleasure to get to know Gage this year as a member of Best Buddies. Gage stands out among his peers for his kindness, patience, compassion, and leadership skills. Our Hoboken Middle School Best Buddies Friendship Chapter would not have been the same without him. I am so very proud of Gage, and this honor is well-deserved." In addition to Best Buddies, Gage is involved in a myriad of extracurricular activities. He is a member of the Student Council and part of the sailing program. Over the last few weeks, he has been sailing four days a week, three hours a day, and is just about to receive his certification. He is also part of the Hoops Around Hoboken Basketball Clinic at the high school. Outside of school, Gage plays soccer, ice hockey, lacrosse, and the guitar, and that is quite an active schedule for him. Mom and Dad had this to say. "Gage, you are smart, athletic, you are smart, you are athletic, but most of all, you have a heart of gold. You have matured so much this year, and we admire your hard work and dedication to all that you do while juggling a lot. While you may be a serious kid when it comes to your studies and extracurricular activities, you bring a lot of happiness and laughter to our family each and every day. Thank you for being you. We love you and are so proud of you." Miles added, "Congratulations on being Student of the Month. Your hard work is paying off, and keep up the great, great work." And Brant said, "Congratulations, Gage. You are a great big brother, and I am so happy for you." Please join me in congratulating Gage Angley as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for June. I'll now call up Principal Shannon of Wallace Elementary School. Congratulations, Gage.
Hey, Bruce. We are here tonight to celebrate Bruce Mahia, our Wallace Student of the Month for May 2021. Bruce is a fifth-grade scholar at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by Ms. Leon and Ms. McLaughlin. Bruce carries himself with a quiet confidence that is contagious. He is humble, caring, kind, and respectful. Whenever I see him in the hallway, he gives a thoughtful smile and a respectful greeting. Over the past few years, I've came to realize that behind that humble smile is a thoughtful, personable, and endearing young man who has matured into an amazing student you see before you. As his principal, I am proud to call him our Student of the Month. When asked about Bruce, Ms. Leon and Ms. McLaughlin were in total agreement. Bruce Mahia is a wonderful fifth-grade student who shows respect to his peers and adults throughout each day. Bruce is well-liked by his peers due to his maturity and respect that he shows them. He has great attendance and is prepared for all of his classes. Bruce works hard for his grades. In order to do well in school, he maintains focus and asks for help when needed. Bruce is a bright light in the fifth grade at Wallace. He brings a certain humor- He brings a certain humor to his class that is appropriate and welcome, especially during these more difficult months we have had over the last two school years. When asked about being a Wallace representative for Student of the Month, Bruce was shocked and a little nervous. It was a pleasant surprise. Bruce loves playing basketball and is currently trying out for a basketball team. He enjoys playing video games, spending time with his family, and watching YouTube videos. When he grows up, he wants to be a police officer. Bruce's family was very excited to hear he was Student of the Month. He celebrated with a quesadilla from his favorite restaurant. Bruce upholds the quote, "When given the choice to be right or to be kind, choose kind." We appreciate the kindness you bring to Wallace Elementary School. We know the middle school will be a better place just having you there. Let's hear it for Bruce, our Wallace School Student of the Month for May two thousand twenty-one. You're awesome, Bruce. Got it bud. Bruce, we're gonna take a picture. I'll give this to you tomorrow, okay bud? Ah, there you are. We are also here tonight to celebrate Ezra Chonowitz, our Wallace School Student of the Month for June two thousand twenty-one. Ezra is a preschooler at Wallace Elementary School and was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Scholler. Ezra has a kindness that is infectious. He has a personality that lights up a room. No matter what is happening throughout the day, a simple greeting from Ezra makes every day better. I look forward to watching Ezra continue to illuminate the halls of our Wallace School over the next few years. When asked about Ezra, Ms. Scholler shared, "Ezra is a kind and caring student who always comes to school with a smile. Ezra cares about his friends and teachers alike. He loves to greet them each and every day. He is friendly to others in the hallway and always has a warm disposition. Ezra works hard each day in school by participating in all classwork and activities. He enjoys movement and dancing opportunities as well as fun preschool songs. Ezra loves to read stories. He is always a classroom helper and follows rules and routines at school. When Ezra found out he was going to be the Student of the Month, he was very excited. He likes school and he loves books. Some of the messages from his other teachers were as follows. Ezra is a joy to be around. His fun-loving personality can brighten up anyone's day. He likes seeing all the people in the hallways and around school. He loves greeting adults and peers, and his smile lights up the room. Ezra is a friend to everyone. Winnie the Pooh said it best. A friend is one of the nicest things you can have and one of the best things that you could be." Ezra is so incredibly deserving of the title Student of the Month. Let's hear it for Ezra, our Wallace School Student of the Month for June two thousand twenty-one. Hi Ezra. We're gonna, we're gonna take a picture bud. See you tomorrow Ezra. At this time, I'd like to call Vice Principal Sorfin from Thomas G. Connors School.
Hi Jay, can you hear me? Congratulations to Najee Freeman, the Thomas G. Connors Student of the Month for May. Najee was nominated by his fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Donovan. Najee exemplifies the ideal qualities of a fifth grader. He exhibits a passion for learning new things, strives to participate in all content areas, and regularly accepts challenges given to him to extend his understanding of new concepts. Not only is he a diligent worker, he is also a role model and teammate to his classmates by supporting them academically, socially, and emotionally. He leads by example and encourages all friends in class to work through any task by using encouraging words and lending a helping hand. In addition, his ability to complete assignments allows him to support his peers remaining on task. Najee is well-mannered and has a calming presence, exemplifying what it means to be a Connors Koala. This prestigious award is just the beginning of the impressive and outstanding things that Najee will accomplish on his educational path. Najee's favorite subjects in school are math, physical education, music, and art. He has a passion for basketball and would love to play professionally one day. We look forward to watching Najee's growth as he moves on to Hoboken Middle School in the fall. When a few of his peers were asked why they felt Najee was deserving of Student of the Month, the responses included the following. Zephie stated, "Najee deserves the Student of the Month Award because he listens to teachers, completes all of his work, and is friendly to his classmates." Tiana added, "Najee deserves the Student of the Month Award because he helps other students with classwork when they are having difficulty and is a good friend to everyone." Mr. Donovan, his fifth-grade teacher, shared, "Najee, you are an outstanding student and an outstanding member of our fifth grade. Not only are you hardworking and show a great deal of perseverance, but you also have an amazing quality of being a kind friend." When we asked Najee, Najee stated, "I feel proud about winning this award because I realize how important it is, how important my education is to me. Being named Student of the Month is exciting and I am happy to be recognized. As a school community, we are all so proud of Najee and the time he has spent with us at Connors. You are and always will be a koala. Great job Najee." Hi Abby. How are you guys? Congratulations to Abigail Murray, the Thomas G. Connors Student of the Month for June. Abigail was nominated by her second-grade teacher, Ms. Ayers. Over the past few months, Abby has shown an admirable amount of perseverance in working towards second-grade skills and concepts. Abigail has taken every new concept head-on this year, and when a particular skill is challenging, Abby shows grit and determination as she works towards mastery. Abigail and Ms. Ayers had a chat about everyone in the world having strengths and weaknesses. Abigail knew that she loved fractions, whereas she found out that even though Ms. Ayers is a teacher, she gets nervous sometimes doing fractions too. After their talk, Abigail felt much more confident with her strengths and continued to practice working on more difficult tasks. With that, Abigail's participation and effort went through the roof. Her hand flies up to participate in all subjects, and she is doing her best work in all areas. She has even shown so much improvement academically with her classwork, benchmark scores, and reading level. Though Ms. Ayers has shared how proud she is with Abigail's progress, she felt that everyone in T.G. Connors and the Hoboken School District should know how hard Abigail is working to be the best second grader she could be. Abigail is not just a hard worker. She is also funny, kind, compassionate, and an all-around great friend to her classmates. Abigail's favorite subjects in school are math and literacy, and she hopes to be a doctor when she grows up so she can help people that are sick. When a few of her peers were asked why Abigail was deserving of this award, the responses they shared were the following. Noah shared, "I think Abigail deserves the award because she's kind and helpful. It's good to have her in class." Declan shared, "I think Abby is very kind and a good friend to all of us." Harper says, "I think Abigail deserves it because she's been working really hard lately." And Maya shared, "She deserves this award because she's a kind student, tries hard in school, and tries to be the best student she can be. Abby deserves this award for everything she does in school." When Ms. Ayers was asked the same question, she stated, "Abigail, I am so proud of you. Not only are you hardworking and show a great deal of perseverance, but you also have the amazing quality of being a sweet kid. You make me smile every time you give a heartfelt compliment, whether to me or a friend in class. Keep working just as hard, Abby. You are so deserving of this award." And when we asked Abby, she gave us a quote as well. She said, "I feel very happy that I won because Student of the Month is a big deal, and my parents are very proud of me. I am excited that my teacher nominated me. Keep up the great work, Abby. We look forward to the next few years as your love of learning continues to grow, allowing you to accomplish anything you put your mind to. Great job, Abby."
At this time, I would like to call up Principal Bartlett from Brant School. Where is my guy Brandon? There he is. Hi Brandon. Hi Bianca. Congratulations to Brandon Torres, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for May two thousand and twenty-one. Brandon was nominated by his kindergarten teacher, Ms. Paco, and his art teacher, Ms. Capalbo. Ms. Paco said, "Brandon was nominated because he's been working very hard to be a model student in our kindergarten classroom. He is a great example of a student who can achieve anything that they put their mind to. Brandon has been working towards becoming Student of the Month by putting effort into his work and collaborating nicely with his classmates. He brings a positive, fun, and hard-working attitude to our classroom." Ms. Capalbo added, "Brandon is very thoughtful and kind, always offering his help when it is time to clean up an art class. He heats direction and lets his creative freedom flow. During his art-making, he shows his classmates how to explore and have fun when painting and drawing. He is an example of a hard-working art student." Ms. Paco added, "Brandon is someone who brings a positive and fun attitude to our classroom community. He has grown so much over the past nine months and has become a student who can set goals and achieve them. As principal, one of my favorite things each day is when Brandon walks into the building during arrival. His mom has impeccable timing. She always does a great job of getting him to school just on time to get on Ms. Paco's line. Her class is one of the last to enter, and I can always count on Brandon being at the back of the line to make sure his friends get inside. More often than not, he gives me a fist bump, and that moment typically lets me know that arrival is over and all the students are safely inside. Brandon does a great job keeping them safe." Brandon has made a lot of progress throughout the year. He's learned how to collaborate with his classmates and contribute to his classroom community in a positive way. He's become very interested in math and is curious about time, money, and math problems. He's grown into a student who tries his best and is excited to learn. Brandon has grown tremendously from the beginning of the year to now in art class. He's become more interested in creating meaning and relating his artwork to himself and his personal experiences. He always tries his best to focus on his hand-eye coordination and apply various art elements and techniques from class to his work. Brandon is motivated to try his best and work hard. He shows his classmates that they can also work towards their goals and achieve them. His favorite thing to do at home is go outside and play with his toys. He also enjoys playing soccer. At school, he loves to learn math and is very excited to learn how to tell time. When Brandon grows up, he wants to be a police officer so he can help save people just like Batman. Brandon said, "I feel so happy that I became Student of the Month, and I'm excited to try to become Student of the Month again next year. We are very proud of you, Brandon. Keep setting goals and you will achieve them." Congratulations to Brandon Torres, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for May two thousand and twenty. Brandon, give me a big smile for a picture, big smile. Great job, Brandon. I'll give this to you tomorrow, okay pal? You're welcome. You got it pal, I'll see you tomorrow. I saw Fiona here earlier. There she is. Hi Fiona. Congratulations to Fiona Blaylock, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for June two thousand and twenty-one. Mrs. Faruk of the fourth-grade team nominated Fiona as Student of the Month. She said, "I've known Fiona since kindergarten. I've had her in science all these years, and this year I had the pleasure to be her homeroom teacher. I nominated her for displaying a positive attitude for academics throughout the year, being kind to her peers, and showing respect for the school, adults, and classmates. Fiona is an efficacious and responsible member of our class. She takes pride in fulfilling all the responsibilities assigned to her and actively participates in class by working hard to excel in academics. Fiona is a shy and quiet student. The quote that would best describe Fiona is, 'I don't say much, but I think a lot.' While Fiona is a bit on the quiet side, whenever I ask her how she's doing or say hello to her, the genuine warmth and compassion she has shines through. Two years ago, Fiona was in the Hoboken Theater Camp. She is very proud of this achievement. As described by Fiona, for the play, it was nerve-wracking that I had to perform in front of an audience. I was very nervous that I would not be able to perform because of stage fright. When I was on stage, I did a fabulous performance. My theater teacher was proud of me because I faced my fears. My present achievement is that me and my friend Max did our folk tale play in our class. We worked very hard. We researched the folk tale, wrote our script, made props, practiced, and performed for our classmates. Fiona is an asset to school because she tries her best to do well always. Her behavior is exemplary, and she will jump at any opportunity to help a friend in any way. Fiona likes to swim and loves the feeling of floating like a feather in the water. Her favorite subjects are social studies, science, music, and art. She plays handball and listens to music, either pop or blues. She said, "When I grow up, I want to go to Harvard. And after college, my goal is to work in Hoboken City Hall because my great-grandfather works there. He does very hard work and has inspired me to work hard to achieve goals." When told she would receive this honor, Fiona said, "I never thought I would get the award of being the school Student of the Month. When I heard, I felt like crying tears of joy, and my heart felt happy inside and out. I feel proud because only a few people get this award per year. Since I'm receiving this award, I would like to thank everyone who helped me along the way, such as my teacher, my family, Mr. Baker, and Mr. Bartlett." Well, thank you Fiona for being such a kind, warm, and gentle student. We are incredibly proud of you. And ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating our Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for June, Fiona Blaylock. You're welcome Fiona. Do me a favor, give me a big smile so I can stand next to the screen, we'll take a picture. Grandma, turn the camera back on for a second, we didn't get the picture. Fiona, can you hear me? Alright. We'll get one tomorrow. Oh there we, okay, stay right there, fix the camera so we can, there you go, right there, stay right there. Thanks Fiona, see you tomorrow.
Thank you principals, thank you families, and most importantly, thank you students, and congratulations. You can jump off now.
Okay, um, next we will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for the superintendent's report.
Good evening. I have some district news to share this evening. However, I would like to begin with a few appointments that you will see on tonight's agenda. agenda. I am pleased to announce Hoboken High School's new athletic director, Mr. Jack Baker. Mr. Baker will lead the department beginning July 1st. Mr. Baker joined the Hoboken Public School District in 2006. As a physical education and driver's ed teacher, Mr. Baker served first in the alternative school program. He transitioned to the Collabro Elementary School in 2013 and was there until 2019. In Mr. Baker's last year at Collabro, he was named acting principal. For the past two years, Mr. Baker has served as vice principal at Brant. Mr. Baker has an impressive athletic background. He played baseball all through high school and received a scholarship to play baseball for St. Peters University, and then on to William Patterson University. There, he received his teaching degree. Mr. Baker not only coached at William Patterson University and St. Peters, but also coached girls tennis, boys and girl swimming, boys' basketball, and girls' volleyball at Hoboken High School. He is fondly remembered for his eight-year tenure at Hoboken High School as the boys' baseball coach. When asked about assuming his new administrative role, Mr. Baker said, "This opportunity to take on the position as director of athletics for the Hoboken Board of Education is a dream come true. I am excited to work as athletic director, as I have always looked up to my teachers, colleagues, coaches, and administrators, and I would like to give back to the students and to Hoboken and guide them along the way. I believe our students need to take part in a variety of sports opportunities to find their passions. I am very excited about working with all of our growing families here in Hoboken, and together we will knock it out of the park." I am also honored to announce two new vice principals that have been hired from within our own teaching ranks. Ms. Elizabeth Lawrence... Ms. Lawrence will replace Mr. Steve Dickerson on July 1st as our new vice principal for Wallace Elementary School. When Ms. Lawrence was asked about her new position, she claimed, "I am very excited to accept the role of vice principal. For the past four years, Wallace and the Hoboken Public School District has been my home. Countless experiences have greatly contributed to my growth as a teacher and an educational leader. Words cannot express how honored I am to accept the role as vice principal at Wallace. It is my passion to further learn from and serve our scholars, families, teachers, staff, and the entire Wildcat community. I cannot wait to begin working in partnership with Mr. Shannon, continuing the amazing work of Mr. Dickerson, and supporting the greater district team." Last, but certainly not least, I am also happy to announce Ms. Mara as the new vice principal of the Joseph F. Brand Elementary... Ms. Mara has spent most of her teaching career in Hoboken, and it quickly became her home. She shared, "I am beyond thrilled to take on the role as vice principal and to continue my professional journey in the Hoboken Public School District. I look forward to getting to know the staff and families at Brant Elementary School and working with Mr. Bartlett." Also in the audience this evening is Brian Fernandez. He is a new addition to our technology team as an IT network help desk support. So, Brian, if you'd like to just stand. As superintendent of school, it brings me great joy to see our own staff members grow their leadership capacity in our district. These appointments are not only a testament to the three talented and dedicated staff members, but to the entire staff. I am confident that the athletic department at Hoboken High School will continue to be in great hands, but will also flourish under the leadership of Mr. Baker, and that both Wallace and Brant Elementary Schools will reach great heights with the teams of Shannon and Lawrence and Bartlett and Mara. Along the lines of celebrations and end-of-the-year activities, I would like to congratulate Ms. Miller and her talented actors from all of our schools, grades K through 12. The live version of Schoolhouse Rock Virtual was just simply amazing, and I'm sure that most of you did exactly what I did and sung along with all of the songs to each part of the musical. I am so proud of our students at Hoboken Middle School as well. We were notified recently by Professor Glashenko, professor from the University of Colorado and the Director of the Center for Advanced Technologies and Optical Materials, that out of 1,230 students from 48 states, Hoboken Middle School had three second-place award winners out of eight shared nationally, and one third-place winner out of six shared nationally in the first National Physics Academic Bowl Olympiad. Peter Franco, Madison Walia Peters, and Morgan Walia Peters all took second-place awards, and Beatrice Olney took third-place award. We also had six students score in the 90th percentile. Hoboken Middle School is also proud of Zoe Magalletta and Arcadio Torres, who placed second in the 2001 National Geography Challenge. At Hoboken High School, we are so proud of Ty Wolf and Carolyn, who both qualified for the Group One State Championships in track and field, and they will compete next weekend. Alyssa Toledo, who was also recognized by the United Nations Association of the United States in interview in their Fourth Annual National Community Service Awards, and also to Hoboken High School senior Rosemarie Rosado, a winner of the Hoboken County Prosecutor's Office Women's History Month Creativity Contest. We all recognize how important digital citizenship is, especially over the past year and a half, and I am so pleased to announce that both Connors and Wallace Elementary Schools have earned the distinction as common-sense schools, along with Hoboken High School and Hoboken Middle School. We are anxiously awaiting Brant's distinction since they have also submitted their package. As we end this year and continue to navigate through the challenges of COVID-19, our high school students have recently held their second vaccination clinic, and I am working to set up Hoboken Middle School's clinic before the school year ends for the first vaccination. We held a successful prom, and we cannot wait for the eighth and fifth grade dances. Field days are underway, and moving-up ceremonies and graduations are right around the corner. We have all learned so much over the past year and a half, and I think I speak for all of us that our resilience is solid as a rock. As we prepare for summer activities and a new school year, I cannot wait to see what we will accomplish next.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Congratulations to Mr. Baker, Ms. Lawrence, and Ms. Mara. I'm thrilled for you. All very well-deserved, and welcome, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, we are now going to move on to committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
I would like to inform the board that we have an updated bills list tonight, and that on the agenda are hopes in Mals Square, the preschool contracts were added to the agenda for the 2022 school year.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will go to curriculum. Ms. Conna.
Good evening. The committee met virtually on Thursday, June 3rd at 12:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. There is one action item on the agenda under curriculum and instruction that was reviewed and we recommend for board approval. In addition, our staff are working on providing summer assignments to our students. Our administrators will be attending a retreat in Pennsylvania in the beginning of July, followed by a training session for our staff, all which will be funded by HPF, as noted under Agenda Item 10.08. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Simons.
The facilities committee met virtually on Thursday, June 3rd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Delara, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. There are no agenda items for approval this month, but a few items to mention. The Hoboken High School Stadium will have public hours on Mondays through Friday from 6:30 to 8:30 a.m. Today was Election Day, and four of our schools were polling sites. The Hoboken Police Academy, Junior Police Academy, will be hosted at Hoboken High School and the JFK Stadium, July 12th to July 16th, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. And finally, the Hoboken Recreation Special Olympic Bike Camp will be held June 28th to July 2nd in the high school gym and at the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Delatorre.
The finance committee met on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Angley, Simons, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. In addition, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I'd like to extend a big thank you to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation and Base Cover U.S. for their generous donations. Base Cover U.S. has donated 1,600 face masks for high school students and district staff. The Hoboken Public Education Foundation has generously donated $12,000 for professional development and administrative retreats. Thank you again to both.
Thank you. Governance, Ms. McGurk.
The governance committee met on June 3rd at 6:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Conna, Mr. Kerian, and myself. We reviewed the agenda items and recommend all for approval. Of note, and obviously a large part of our discussion, was the promotion of Mr. Baker to athletic director and Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Mara to the vice principals at Brant and Wallace and Brant, respectively. We also discussed the staffing needs for the summer program, both the extended school year and the summer leap program, which you will find on tonight's agenda. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The wellness committee met on June 3rd. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Conna, Ms. Simons, Dr. Johnson, and myself. There are no items... Sorry, my earring sucked my mask. There are no items on the agenda for the approval, but we did discuss the upcoming food service provider interviews for the upcoming school year, which will take place on June 15th. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to believe that another school year is coming to an end. And with that being said, and as you can see from the agenda, we are already planning for next school year. I'd like to wish all of our students the best, as our high school students will have their National Honor Society induction and the Senior Awards Dinner next week, and many of our elementary and middle school students will be celebrating Field Day. And of course, we're all looking forward to graduation. It's been a very different year, but an extremely successful one in the Hoboken Public School District. And I'd again like to thank our superintendent, who is tireless, the administration teachers, and all of our staff for their support and dedication to the district. And I wish you all a very relaxing, hopefully, and great summer. Although, we'll have one more meeting at the end of June, so we may see you again then. Okay, so moving on to public comments on agenda items. I don't see any names. No? So, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we take the roll call, please?
Roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Just want to say congratulations to all the new appointees tonight. Very excited and looking forward to seeing all the new faces for next year. Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simons?
Yes.
Ms. DeKerian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, and I don't think there are any there either. So, with that being said, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.